Persons who use electricity other than yourself. So, so, so there are 300,000 households in Jamaica. That steel electricity is a problem that we've had for a long time. And I believe that it is government responsibility to take the lead in solving that problem. A lot of it due to the high price of electricity. And for me, for all of you, we appreciate that electricity is a necessity in today's world. So we have to find a way to deal with it. And I have tabled in parliament for the last four years certain proposals. We intend to implement them to once and for all, not overnight, but over time, to rid the country or certainly to reduce that high level of theft. So that you don't have to be burdened by that, which is 20% of the cost that you pay. We believe that we have to be a lot more revolutionary in the use of renewables. It's amazing what has happened, for example, with solar technology. When I bought my panels, solar panels about 14 years ago, they were very expensive. They were cumbersome and we did not have a mechanism to encourage, to provide incentives for people to get involved in solar. The price of solar has fallen dramatically. The technology has improved tremendously. They, what is related to solar are the inverters that connect with the, the house. Those prices have also plummeted. But most importantly, storage, which was always an issue with renewables. Because the sun shines for a certain number of hours in the daytime and then you are no longer generating electricity. But what has happened in the last two years in particular is that the storage has improved so much that there are some persons now who can migrate from the grid and have 24-hour electricity. Because during the daytime, the batteries are being charged while you're generating electricity using solar. We want to see the full use, an expansion of solar to, so that when we drive around, we want to see on the roofs solar being generated, but not only for yourself. We believe that as we expand the delivery of electricity supplies, that we have to provide the incentives. And we did start it by putting in place net billing. So if you generate more than you need, you can get a license to sell to the grid. We have to provide greater incentives in terms of the price that you paid for that electricity. And of course, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a while. We also have to introduce large-scale solar projects across the length and breadth of Jamaica. It's amazing that people who are bidding for projects in Jamaica on solar, they are now bidding at prices below 10 US cents per kilowatt hour. And when you make mandatory, as we intend to do, that any new large-scale solar must be accompanied by batteries, then I believe we will see the reduction of the price. And it's our aim, not overnight, but Jamaica can only be competitive if we achieve a price of between 15 and 18 US cents per kilowatt hour. So it's, it's, it's a massive effort that we intend to pursue. And I believe that we have the, the right approach. Just one word on your electricity bills, because I know that there were concerns about this so-called um GCT that the government recently announced. Um, I believe it's a three-card trick. The fact of the matter is before this recent announcement, those persons at the lower end who used less than 150 kilowatt hours of electricity did not pay GCT. Those above paid 15%. The government has removed that incentive, that benefit for the those under 150, and they have now put 7% across the board. 7% across the board. They have offered, they have offered during this election period a benefit, which is to introduce a subsidy. They haven't said how long the subsidy will last. So there's a subsidy that will enable you to get a 3% benefit. Right? So it's both a rebate of 7% and 3% subsidy. So for the time being, you are benefiting, but that can't last forever. The irony of this is that in relation to those prepaid customers, everybody now has to pay a 7%. Now, the prepaid people are those at the lowest level who are just being encouraged to start pay for electricity. And they are going to be hit, they are now hit with a 7% GCT on their electricity bill. So we believe it's a three-card trick. And it does not, that in relation to prepaid customers will not encourage people to get on the grid. I, I really don't want to abuse my 10 minutes. I'm sure there are some other issues, some details that we can share with you later on, including Floyd's 50,000 homes that we intend to solarize, that we intend to solarize. And um, thank you very much for listening, all of us.
So I'm reading lips from the back of the room and it says someone is blocking and the license plate number is in my phone. Right. There you go, nine zero one seven K as in cat, king rather, G sum. And what? D as in David. So King David, there you go. Anyone who is driving that license plate, that vehicle with the license plate number, please, you're blocking someone who would like to move. What color vehicle, what type vehicle? Didn't say? Oh boy. I shan't repeat that at all. What stands out in my mind is this, uh, a three-card trick. The resident who reached out to me this week, she said, listen to me, I was paying $5,000 for my prepaid electricity. And she was getting 101 to 102 kilowatts. And that was last April. And it's the same $5,000 she's now using this year and suddenly she's only getting 86. 86. And she just reached out, she said, listen to me, um, Ms. Miller, I'm gonna have to talk about this because I don't understand it. And can you imagine that is on the prepaid side? And the number of residents who are affected by this, the number of prepaid residents, where do they fall within our society? And exactly, that's exactly the picture. So I'm hoping that Sophia is here. I'm sure she has other questions when we get to the question and answer section. But we've talked about security. We've talked about energy. We hear how much we're going to be putting solar farms on the roof. But do we own a house is the question. So we're going to talk a little bit about housing. And this problem has been brewing for many years now. And it has managed to chase some Jamaicans off the island in search of a better life elsewhere. I think with Trump doing what he's now doing, they might be heading back home. It is estimated that of the almost 3 million people in Jamaica, roughly 25% live in Kingston and St. Andrew, which makes clearly for a highly congested, over-commercialized, exhaust fumes-infested city. And that is a direct quote I got from one of our newspapers. But more germane to this discussion is the fact that the demand for housing in Kingston has been driving house prices higher and higher and higher. And certainly at a faster rate than the growth of our salaries that we typically earn. So you can just see the problem that we're facing. To fix the problem, one would think people would simply stop migrating to Kingston. So all of us who come from country, go back home. However, that can't happen with the bulk of employment opportunities that are situated in the city. Added to that, most employers seem to have a strong resistance towards employing staff on a remote basis. They heard about COVID? I wonder. Employees who work in Kingston must therefore find residence in Kingston or its similarly congested environment, or take this long arduous trek from the country into Kingston every day for work. So ladies and gentlemen, the gentleman who is now going to tell us about our housing situation, how we can resolve it, I introduce to you Professor Senator Floyd Morris.
Thank you very much, I should say, Comrade Miller. Uh, thanks to your team for extending the invitation to me. And I recognize my colleagues, MP Paul Will and leader of opposition business in the Senate, Senator Peter Bunting. I'm very happy to be here. And I must say that I do so with great pride because in 2022, the leader of the opposition, Mr. Mark Golden, called me and said that he was going to assign me the portfolio of housing and sustainable living. You know, the truth is that, Philip, I was very happy for the reassignment because on previous occasions, as a person with a disability, I was given carriage of disability portfolio and disability issues. And you want to now pivot into other things. And I got the opportunity to uh, deal with housing and sustainable living. And I come from a rural community in Bailey's Vale, St. Mary. Grew up in a four-bedroom board house with my mother as a dressmaker, growing eight of us. And then when you take into consideration grandchildren and extended family members from the community, at some point in time, there were 20 individuals in that four-bedroom house. So I understand the importance of having a home to live and to raise family. And so when my leader said to me, there is a big problem in Jamaica with housing. And we, as a political organization, have to fix it because it is in our DNA. Your mandate is to get affordable houses for the people of Jamaica. So we put together a team of individuals from the housing sector and academia and the legal profession and ordinary Jamaicans to be a part of what we call a housing task force. And emanating from that, we came up with a number of solutions to deal with the housing crisis in Jamaica. But I want to say to you, before I highlight what are the major features of our housing approaches, I want to indicate that from as far back as the 1950s, different PNP administration have been placing an emphasis on improving their housing stock in Jamaica. You will recall that when Norman Manley was premier, it was during that time, we saw the integrated housing development introduced in Jamaica where you had whole pastures, Mona and the Harborview housing schemes. Then in the 1970s, we had a housing crisis. And when I read Politics of Change, Michael Manley pointed out about people living in such houses and Watland, Watland Daub. And an effort had to be made to change that configuration of houses. And that is why NHT was introduced. And since its inception, the NHT has built over 200,000 houses in Jamaica in its 50-year, 50-year history, changing the face of Jamaica's housing stock. That took place under a PNP administration and it continues to do so today. Then in the 1990s, Prime Minister PJ Paterson introduced the Operation Pride initiative that when we left office, some 60,000 individuals had benefited from the initiative in terms of land and housing. You just want to look at Pines of Karachi, look at Long Mountain, look at uh, Norwich in Portland, Melrose Mews, Mount Edgecombe, Bel Air, and a plethora, plethora of other such developments. And then in the late 2000s, when Prime Minister Portia Simpson-Miller was Prime Minister, she decided that she was going to change and transform what was happening with sugar workers who were living in barracks houses. And a number of modern housing facilities were built to accommodate sugar workers. So the People's National Party has had a history in terms of improving the housing stock in Jamaica. And the big, greater more development that took place in the early 1990s with funding from the San Jose Accord. And so we are very proud of our history and we intend to build on that. But one of the things that is happening today, there is a demand for 191,000 houses based on the economic and social survey. Over the past nine years, what we have seen is a greater focus on the upper income band, the upper end of the housing market. And I understand the role and the work of the private sector in terms of building houses to cater to a particular demand. But government have a responsibility.
Please stand by, we have lost the mic from Senator Morris. Please stand by. Welcome to the McRi Talk Live Town Hall Meeting from the Meadowbrook High School.
So the truth of the matter is that government has a duty to make sure that we cater to all of our people. But those at the lower income band have been left by the wayside over the past nine years. The government in 2020 promised that it would have delivered 70,000 houses to the Jamaican people. But the data from the NHT is pointing to just below 15,000 houses being delivered within the last five years. If that is not dismal, I want someone else to show me what it is or what it looks like. The fact of the matter is, we need to be building close to 15,000 houses on an annual basis in order to catch up with demand. Last year, the NHT had indicated that it was going to build 15,009 houses. They were only able to deliver 2,754 housing units. A lot of inefficiencies and a lot of chattering that is taking place about housing. We are committed to delivering based on our track record. And that is why our leader went to parliament in the budget debate this year and outlined a plethora of ideas and initiatives that we will be introducing when we form the next government. One, we are going to stop the annual extraction of the $11.4 billion that is used to fund the budget on an annual basis. I wish to indicate to you that since 2013, approximately $150 billion of contributors' funds have been used to support the budget. And that is why our leader, Mr. Mark Golden, has said in another initiative that we will be implementing to build out 50,000 houses, our leader said, alright, $150 billion have been extracted from the NHT. What do we give back to these contributors? And we have signaled that the land portion of the housing cost, when we build those 50 houses, 50,000 houses, that is not going to be included in the final selling price. That is going to be significant because based on our estimate, it's between 2.5 to 3 million dollars in the reduction in the price of houses for low-income earners in Jamaica. And then we decided that we are going to be making sure that we cater to our young people. The government in 2020 said that they were going to give, build 10,000 houses for our young people. I don't know how many young people in Jamaica have benefited from that. But what the leader has said that is implementable is that we are going to make and establish a special grant fund where young people up to age 35 will be able to benefit from a $500,000 grant to pay down on the deposit for their houses. And it is going to be funded from that same $11.4 billion that is sent back to the NHT based on the annual extraction that is taking place. So $1 billion, 2,000 young people. And when we multiply it over five years, it's 10,000 young people gonna benefit from it and not 2,000 as some people are putting it out there in the public space. And then we say, alright, we're building 50,000 houses. We're providing young people with the deposit for their houses. What can we do for the dressmaker? The farmer, the barber, the taxi driver who does not have a monthly pay slip and able to contribute to the NHT on a monthly basis and to pay for a mortgage? What we say we would do is to introduce the Rent to Buy Initiative. And with this Rent to Buy Initiative, you will be able to rent one of the units, houses from the NHT. And that rent, having paid it over a period of time, whether it be six months, whether it be eight months, and we see the consistency in your payment, we will convert that into a mortgage. Because we in the People's National Party believe that it is better for an individual to pay a mortgage than to be paying rent. When you pay your mortgage, you have responsibility for your owner key. When you pay rent, you're managing somebody else's key. The People's National Party is putting ownership in the hands of the people. And that is what we are about, to transform the Jamaican society. So that the things that you hear my colleague, Senator Bunting, talking about, that is fueling crime and violence in the communities. We are going to be dealing with it in terms of making our citizens have more and greater access to quality housing. And the final point that I have to make, Philip would never forgive me if I take my seat and don't mention the Portia. Because we are going to be introducing, as the leader of opposition outlined, the program for the orderly renewal and transformation of infrastructure in all areas. The Portia Initiative, where we are going to complete the 47 Operation Pride schemes across this country that the government has abandoned and has shown no interest in improving and completing to improve the quality of life for our people. And we are going to be making sure that those people get their land titles. We are going to be tearing down zinc fences in those communities so that it makes better and easier policing that Senator Bunting has spoken about, and to lift the dignity of the people. And we are going to be improving the sidewalks and make them more accessible for senior citizens and persons with disabilities. So that in the morning, So that in the mornings, our senior citizens can walk as a part of the exercise trail. Our persons with disabilities can wheelchair and navigate the community with ease. That is what we are going to be doing with the Portia Initiative. And here what now to tie everything up together. Because, you see, when we sell those 50,000 houses, anybody who have any concern about how the Portia is going to be implemented, I say to them, don't worry about that. Because I know we are gonna give away the 50,000 houses. They are going to be sold. And the profits that we are going to generate from it, some of it, we're gonna be using to implement the Portia Initiative, to build out the sidewalk, tear down the zinc fences, and improve the condition of the Jamaican people. So, I am excited about the housing options that have been placed on the table by a progressive, another progressive leader of the People's National Party in Mark Golding. I am looking forward to him getting that opportunity to lead the housing revolution in Jamaica. God bless you.
So there you have it, ladies and gentlemen. A lot is happening. And the question, of course, at this time becomes, what is going to be happening for North West St. Andrew? Because you see, we can sit here and listen and it all sounds nice, you know, but it have to come home to home, not joke. It has to come home to us to make sure that we're actually improving things for our residents. So at this point in time, we're going to open up for questions, field questions, observations, any thoughts that you may have. And I may have to lay hands on people suddenly because I don't see no hand going up yet. But I'm going to invite Sheldon to come forward to manage this aspect of the evening's proceedings. And he's, I think, running for the other microphone. Alright, so let me just recap a few things that have been said. On the security, we talked about infrastructure, creating a framework, looking at the design of our communities, looking at lighting and derelict buildings. And let me tell you, as you walk through some of our communities, every third house or fourth or fifth house is no abandoned. They're actually sitting there empty. We talked about storage of energy, the full expansion of solar, net billing, etc., and expanding on that. And on the housing, wow, we heard so many things. I will not even bother to recap all of the six or seven points, but quickly hand over to Sheldon.
Alright, so I've heard the presentations and now it's time to feed your questions. So just stick your hands up, we have one here.
Thank you. Just quickly, on the matter of security, what I would like to hear a little bit more about is the utilization of the social aspect of society in fighting the difficulties that we challenge. So, I would like to see more social workers being involved in the process. We have been probably over policing and yes, we understand the role of the police. But they want to get into the prevention aspect and the intervention aspect, then you are going to need the social workers to be part and parcel of that. And secondly, just very quickly, we used to, I am in the kind of lower end of Melbrook, down Lorn Avenue, Tunbridge areas and all of that. We used to have the community organization down there. But that has waned and we really would like to get some kind of leadership in terms of getting that back together again. Because I think that's also fundamental in terms of the prevention and the management of the community overall. Thank you.
Yes, the, I think Floyd, I can't remember if it was in his previous portfolio, but I recall him championing the idea of engaging, I think there's another thousand social workers to deploy across our schools and communities to handle some of the dysfunctionality that comes when we don't have strong parenting, basically. And then that is also, can also be reinforced by not having strong communities. And it's interesting, you spoke about, there was a time when we had a very, a really thriving neighborhood watch, or a community of neighborhood watches across Jamaica. I know in Mandeville, for example, this was quite in Manchester, but Greater Mandeville in particular, there was a thriving set of neighborhood watches led by returning residents who were, you know, many of them had come from union backgrounds, etc., in the UK and were good chairmen and chairpersons of these things that were now retired and had a lot of time to put into the organizing. And it was very vibrant at one time. As that generation has, you know, moved on or passed on, we have not had a lot of younger people stepping forward to provide leadership. And not just neighborhood watches, because we had some, you know, citizen associations. What I would try and encourage people to do when I was MP is have a citizen association that would have multi-funcions. So instead of trying to form a neighborhood watch, a citizen association, a sports, a youth sports club or a youth club, etc., etc., under the umbrella of the citizen association or the CDC or whatever, you could have different divisions. So rather than the police coming and form a police youth club, they form a youth club under the overall umbrella, overall umbrella of the citizen association. The citizen association has a neighborhood watch committee. The citizen association has a recreation committee. It has one that I used to run competitions. I see somebody here who used to run it for me, Trishana Archer, who was, worked with me in central Manchester. But we used to have beautification competitions where we had communities competing with each other for a prize. You know, whoever would plant the most flowers and keep their verges clean and sidewalks maintained and so on. And I very much take your point because when people feel not just invested in the community, but they feel a part of a community. I'm not just talking the physical structures. I'm talking about the people in the communities, their, you know, neighbors, friends, and so on. So, I very much take that point and that is an area that we're going to invest in heavily. I can tell you, in South Manchester, I've met quite a few graduates from MCU, social scientists, social workers, you know, a university that, Floyd did not attend, but he has a great affinity for. And, yeah, and they produce a number of social workers as well as they are at the universities. And there are not enough jobs for them. And yet, the need is so great out there. I mean, I can tell you, every school, you know, in, in, not just my constituency, but all over, could absorb two, three more social workers just to deal with the adequate socialization of the intake of students that they're getting. So, you know, we're very much aligned on that issue. Check, check. We have 412 persons online and one of the suggestions that somebody is saying, take NLA and titles office out of the OPM. Well, we joke about OPM being Office of Plenty Ministries, that's what it stands for. And the truth of the matter is, I can tell you, as the spokesman on productivity, one of the greatest obstacles to productivity and to investment in this country is the bureaucracy. And the main bottleneck in bureaucracy is the office of the Prime Minister. Because there's so many things that have to go to the Prime Minister desk to be signed or approved. It is ridiculous. But as I said, you know, he has authoritarian tendencies. He wants to keep everything to his desk and it is not a good thing. Because, a lot announced but very little accomplished. But it also does another thing. It, it is, when you have a bureaucratic state, you create incentives for corruption. Because the only way to work through the bureaucracy oftentimes is to bribe somebody or somebody get a kickback. Whether in cash or in school buses or so on. So, let us, you know, we have to eliminate that to get production going.
True. Right. All protocols observed. An observation. The housing trust is compulsory in its extraction of a certain percentage from salary. Global warming is a clear and present danger, can't hide from that. All schools, in my humble opinion as an educator, should be solar. From that, you feed back into the grid from that. So you would have a net whatever, whatever coming back. Because school goes out like 3 o'clock generally. And that bit of electricity that is coming in from all the schools right around Jamaica, heading back into the grid, take the price down. A compulsory, I don't know, 0.5% or whatever it is from all workers to be used to fund solar for individual homes, again, would solve the electricity problem in terms of cost and taking it down. And to Minister Tabe Bunting, about youth service again. Taking all the boys, which is at risk, and say, we're gonna keep you for two, three years into some, the army, whatever, some kind of training until you're 19 to ensure that you cross that threshold where the gang would be the attraction. I'm just saying.
Alright, firstly, our government is not going to introduce any new tax to fund anything. But, 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 but we do intend to fund this massive push towards greater use of solar, solarization. In fact, I spoke earlier about rooftops. And I'm not talking about residential rooftops alone. I'm talking about all roofs. Every single place in Jamaica. We had introduced a hedge fund some years ago. And the main purpose of that hedge fund was to enable us to use those taxes to do the transformation into greater use of renewable sources. That has not happened. It's in general revenue. We have to rethink that. But it is important to note that if we are going to fund this revolution where the people of the country are generating their own power, and that's why we have called it Power for the People. If we're gonna do that, then they have to have the resources, access to the resources. They'll be able to make back money when they sell to the grid. But the initial outlay is important. And we have to find a way through NHT again. Because NHT does have a facility, an existing facility, to fund solar. But that has to be augmented so that we have a lot of money that will see to the expansion throughout Jamaica of solar.
Second question too.
I just want to do a quick follow-up because in preparing for government, our leader has mandated us that we must work together from now to put together the solutions that will lead to the improvement of the lives of people. And as a result, I mean, Philip Paulwell and I have been having discussion about introducing solar systems on all those 50,000 houses that will be built over the next five years. And it is going to redown to a significant improvement in the quality of life of these residents. And again, we are triggering excitement for the Jamaican people because we are thinking about improving their quality of life and welfare.
And the second question, Senator Bunting, read the youth service, the boys. We had started on the CSJP project. Not a compulsory youth service because it didn't need to be across the board. Those who were already in, going into tertiary institutions, training at, etc., didn't need that intervention. But for what was referred to as the unattached youth, who left school and really were just knocking around and were neither employed nor in any teaching, any learning or training institution. We, we had created a pathway for them to earn, learn, and eventually be certified in skilled-based competencies. So, we had a memorandum of understanding with the GDF Engineering Unit. And they took on hundreds of these youngsters in six-month cohorts. And they would not train them to be soldiers, but they would instill a sort of military discipline in them just in terms of things as simple as getting to work by 8 o'clock or 7:30, whatever the starting time was, every single day. And if they did not, they wouldn't get a stipend for the day. And very quickly, they learned that 8:15 is not 8 o'clock. 8:05 is not 8 o'clock. And they learned it the hard way. But within six months, they had learned some construction, steel, carpentry welding, you know, steel bending, something. Heart would come in, certify them on the job. And then they would leave with a competency certificate that would allow them to work in the construction industry. Some learned plumbing, etc. And that was a program we really had intended to expand. In a sense, it was overtaken by the Jamaica National Service Corps, which was to take that idea, you know, we thought initially, and expand it. But then what they converted it into was just a regular recruitment pool for the military. And in fact, some of those youths who would not normally have passed through the military screening, but because this had been designed for unattached youth, they ended up in the, in the regular military, trained in use of weapons and so on. And then were not kept on in the, in the military because behavioral problems. And then, you know, trouble daddy when them go back out into the community now, an unattached youth with military training. So, we think it sort of went off track. But the idea was to use particularly the engineering regiment as a, as a channel to instill some discipline, get some skills certification. And then, you know, they would have productive opportunities for employment after. I also remember when the program started, the National Youth Service, we had school furniture coming from the program that the boys made and could have distributed to schools for September. Alright, another question.
Good afternoon, comrades. Thank you. I, I'd like to, I'd like to, everybody know me now, right? I'd like to commend Comrade Simpson Miller. Miller Simpson. Very famous name, very famous name, very famous name. And her team for, for this effort. I mean, in fact, I think the party should be doing much more. I mean, in fact, I think the party should be doing much more this across the country. So the questions or the comments. Comrade Bunting. The gangs, the gangs. We know that a lot of the murders and the problems across the country, the gangs. Some of them have started in the school. Would like to comment on that along with the extortion. Because that is what drives the gang, eh? And of course, the condition of the prisons. Comrade Paulwell, Petrojam, is it dying? Or it is slated to, or it is dead? My, my friend and brother, Comrade Morris, I love what you have put to us this afternoon. But then, if, if possible, I think we should add something to that. There are a lot of Jamaicans who have started construction. And for whatever reason, eh? Them can't finish it. Can we have a program or a policy or what have you that could target some of these people? You know, in terms of assisting some of, some of these people. And Comrade Miller did spoke about that twenty-five percent in Northwest. Northwest wants a comrade constituency, a P and P, strong constituency. You know, I, I, I work with Dr. McNeil, I work with Carlisle Dunkley, eh? We allow some of those who came in and marched up. But that twenty-five percent, we are not in touch with that, that group at all as a, as a party. I can tell you, the green shot and the money election there, what have you, flows among that group. So from a political perspective, and they need to win this constituency, I think we have to factor in a policy in dealing with that segment. Thank you.
Now we take Senator Bunting first and then we take MP Paulwell and then Floyd and then you.
All right. I'm glad you brought up that thing about the prisons, Vin. Because I remember we were far along in building a new prison, a maximum security facility during our last term in office. And the President Prime Minister came out strongly against it and said, we should build schools, not prisons. Well, he has built neither schools nor prisons. And we were building prisons from an enlightened perspective or we were planning to build prison from an enlightened perspective. One, most of who go to prison are not the people who are going to be there for life. Most of who end up in Tower Street or St Catherine are going to be back out on the road in four or five years. What does it make sense to dehumanize them and brutalize them in facilities built from slavery times? Overcrowding. The facilities don't have effective cell phone blockers, don't have effective rehabilitation facilities to train them, give them employment skills. But not only that, even the warders who are working there were putting their lives at risk because the thing wasn't properly and modern designed. And in fact, many of the buildings had been condemned and we were still using them. The N W A had checked it and said this thing could, the first serious trauma we get is going to collapse and kill off not just inmates, but wardens who are working there. So, you know, the, as I said, so we got opposition to it then because it, it was as if the, the schools and new schools and new prisons were mutually exclusive. But I built more new schools in my constituency than this government has built in the last two terms in the entire Jamaica. And in fact, they've not built one new high school. So that is addressing that issue. But when we come to office, we will again pursue that path. I think.
Comrade Paulwell, Petrojam, is it dead or it's dying?
Petrojam unfortunately is dying. The fact of the matter is that Petrojam has served us well. It's an oil refinery. It saved us tremendously from purchasing finished products. When we are able to add value right here from crude, we, we create good paying jobs. And the refinery has been able to survive all the difficulties of the past, including what obtained recently with, with the Shillanigans. What we have to do is to take a decision. The refinery has been involved in export. Now that we are, it's no longer producing heavy fuel oil and diesel as, as it used to, they are able to produce asphalt, which is a commodity that is in high demand throughout the Caribbean. I don't see why there isn't greater focus on doing the necessary retrofit to expand its capability to produce asphalt, to export more, to enable growth in our economy and to, to earn foreign exchange. So our approach is completely different from the approach that is taken by the government, which is just to allow it to wither away and die. There was a report done by the Zaka Committee some years ago, but not even that, the government has really contemplated. And that report was to close the refinery and to, to make it into an import terminal, losing the value added, importing finished products and, and just becoming a terminal for, for imports. That is not the correct approach to take. The refinery, we have to concede, is an old refinery. It was built many years ago, old technology, what we call hydroskimming. We have to do the investment and we have to enable it to generate more for export. And I believe that there is in fact a future for Petrojam.
And Comrade Morrison, read the persons who have started building and not able to complete.
Understood, but there's, there's something that I want.
No, we'll take Comrade.
Understood. But what I would like to do, the idea that Mr. Morrison, Vincent Morrison, Comrade Morrison actually raised, I want to twist a little bit before Floyd responds in that what we are trying to do is to come up with also big ideas. And it sounds as though Vincent has been either in our brains or in our conversations that we've been having within the constituency. So I want to actually ask Senator Morris to respond to that question with a view where Northwest is concerned, where the gentrification of the current housing stock is concerned and looking at the unfinished buildings that were just mentioned. What sort of opportunity can we sort of identify, if any, where Northwest sent Andrew is concerned?
Okay, thank you very, very much, Ethne. I must indicate, Vin, that, you know, in our housing task force, we have come up with a comprehensive plan for housing and sustainable living in Jamaica. And we put forward a plethora of ideas. But in preparing for his budget presentation, our leader said to each one of us, give us, give me no more than five of the major ideas that, you know, you would want to see implement from your portfolio. Like the Japanese said, boy, you know, if you go beyond five, it's not priority, it's a shopping list. And so we prioritize those ideas that he has articulated. But there are other things that we had in the plan, which includes some of what you have referenced in terms of how to assist ordinary Jamaicans to improve their housing stock. Some people might want some zinc to complete. Some people might want some cement to complete. You know, how do we assist those individuals? And those are things that we will be working on as a part of our housing initiative. But, you know, that is under consideration. Ethne, definitely, we see the Portia Initiative as being very relevant and appropriate to your constituency because you have some inner-city communities that we need to assist the residents in terms of improving their housing stock. And in general, you have middle-class communities with a lot of retired civil servants, retired professionals. And we have to, that is when I talk about improvement in sidewalks, very much relevant and appropriate to, to a constituency like yours. And even the housing development in terms of the fifty thousand houses that we are going to be building out, we are looking for lands that are owned by government to be a part of this project. And so far, we are being very proactive because we're preparing for government because we are confident that you, the people, gonna be electing the Mark Golding-led P and P as the next government of Jamaica and also ensuring that Ethne Vela will be a part of that number. So we, we want to identify the government lands. We are building out a land bank. We have over three thousand acres of land that we have identified across the country. We want to get between five to six thousand acres. And so if you identify lands in this constituency that are owned by government, that can be a part of the initiative, we are ready. We are ready.
Thank you, thank you, Comrade Morris. All right, we have a few more questions. Oh, Comrade Bunting didn't answer the gang, yes, the gangs.
Yeah, we, we had spoke earlier. I think we had spoke a bit earlier about the gangs, but it's scamming and extortion. What, one things that we, because we've been historically so preoccupied with violent crime, one things we have not paid enough attention to is what is going on in terms of things like scamming and also not just scamming of foreigners, but scamming of Jamaicans. I mean, the last estimate we heard that the scamming was yielding over a billion US dollars. But Jamaicans were also losing more than a billion Jamaican dollars from their bank accounts that money was being extracted through various fraudulent means. And even when it is discovered and it is found not to be their fault, it often can take months to resolve for them to be reinstated, you know, the, the funds to be reinstated to their accounts, which can be, you know, very, very inconvenient for, for persons. So a lot of these, these are going to require improvements in technology. In fact, the whole era of cybersecurity and cyber investigation is something, excuse me, is something that is the, the future or a big part of the future of, of law enforcement and of ensuring the, not just the physical safety, but that your financial stability is not threatened by, by, you know, talented hackers and, and, and scammers being able to get into your, your accounts.
All right.
Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is for Senator Morris. My concern is the transfer of property from parents to children. The taxes involved are really onerous. And I really would like the government to do something about it because it is, to me, it seems that the taxes were designed to take away property from, from us, especially in the rural areas. And, and my mother is, is ninety now. And so it has come to my attention that, yeah, the title is in her, her name. And yes, it's going to cost me somewhere two point something million dollars to get that tax, that, that title changed to the children's name. And I really find that really discouraging. Yes, man, it is onerous. So I don't know what the government can do about that. I really, I'm imploring the government to do something about that to ensure that, yeah, this is, this cannot continue.
Okay. Well, you know, what I can say to that is that we have a very active shadow cabinet and we look at the issues that come before us from time to time. And you have raised this particular issue. So I will definitely raise it at a shadow cabinet and we will formulate the appropriate response to deal with problems such as this. But, you know, we take all the concerns of our citizens seriously. And this one that you have highlighted is very important and we will respond.
Thanks much. Comrade Paulwell, a listener saying, can Petrocarib be revived?
Petrocarib for us is no longer viable because we are moving away from the use of fossil fuel into greater renewables. By the way, if we find fossil fuel, as I believe we do, we have a plan for it. And of course, unfortunately for Grenada, for Venezuela, it's now been caught up in this geopolitics. And we therefore have to approach that when we get back into office with some amount of discernment. And you can trust and rely on us to do so. But I can't comment just now until we get back there because we're not aware of what are some of the other issues. For example, Venezuela still has forty-nine percent technically ownership of Petrojam. Matters in court and that is going to be tough for some time. So we'll get back to that issue in due course.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I, I'm rising to support Floyd's response to a question, I think, Vincent Morrison raised and Ethne spoke to it. The Housing Act empowers the minister to declare housing improvement areas. And my understanding is that there are houses that are unoccupied, houses that may have deteriorated in terms of their structure. And the, the act allows the minister to address that. And that is also going to be part of the Portia Initiative that he is speaking about. But outside of Portia, there's that, right? Now, it's not good to give free legal advice. So don't take this as free legal advice. But in response to a query that was raised earlier about the transfer tax, transfer tax was reduced from five percent to two percent. I'm not sure if the judge is prepared to reduce it further than that. Probably they are, and I'm not in the, right, that's up to you. But what I can say though is that what you may consider is in acquiring property, to look at the tenancy. So if it is a joint tenancy, then it makes it easier for the transfer on the demise of one person because the right of survivorship applies and therefore you won't have to pay any transfer tax. The estate duty is another matter because estate duty is seven point five percent. So that now is where the government could consider bringing that. So that now is where the government could consider bringing that down. But also you can think of succession planning. How are you going to pass that property on to your children, right? Estate planning, what am I saying a while ago? Same thing, right? Estate succession planning, right? And there are different vehicles that can be used that will not burden you with the amount of estate duties that you are talking about, right? But again, I'm not giving free legal advice. If you want to know more, you can, you can come. I give you a broad sense of what it is, right? But if you want to know more, then you can, you can find.
Thanks, I love. All right, we're wrapping up, we're wrapping up, we're wrapping up.
I'm a lawyer too.
So we have a few more questions, we're wrapping up.
Good evening, Mr. Powell. My situation is, is JPS. They are robbing us blind. Why you bring a smart meter? You have nobody coming around to check your meter no more, running no gas or nothing, all right? Now, you turn off the electric. Okay, I call me the $9,000 to pay. Tell me, oh no, you gotta pay $4,000 more for reconnection. But there's nobody come to turn it on. It turn on from the office, fully automatic. So why are you charging me? You understand, the poor people, we are dying with the high costs. And I appreciate what you said about, you know, the new system of energy. But I tell you the honest truth, we need to talk about JPS when you get, when we win this election, because we gotta win this election. Amen, thank you very much.
And in relation to JPS, there is a glorious opportunity now. Because unlike Cable Wireless, when we had to dismantle that monopoly, which had another 50 years to run, JPSco's license runs until 2027, two years' time. But for it not to roll over with the same terms, the government of Jamaica has to by the 7th of July 2025 indicate to JPSco its intentions. It has to start those negotiations. And there are some low-hanging fruits that you need to deal with if you're going to extend the license. And they are importantly under crutch of consumer protection issues. A whole lot of issues, you mentioned them. One that I have had tremendous difficulty with is when there is a fluctuation in the voltage and it knocks your refrigerator, knocks your TV. And then when you go to them, they say, if you look at the fine print of our contract with you, there are some exclusions to liability that you have signed to. And even though we did amend the consumer protection law to make those exclusion clauses unenforceable, our consumers really don't know such rights. But we are going to make sure in the license, if we were to negotiate them, that JPSco would be responsible fully for the damage caused by these fluctuating voltages, that they can correct. There are many issues that we need to deal with upfront in the license. This government, I don't believe they have started to address their minds to this important opportunity.
All right, so we take two more questions and wrap up.
Thank you. This one is for housing. One of the big things I have come across while walking is there are persons who have gotten like an NHT loan and they have joined with their young, young child, a 20-year-old who is working to get the loan. And what is now happening is that that 20-year-old because they cannot get a loan to get a house for themselves because they are already on a title as a landowner. So therefore, that's something that I think needs to be addressed. Either that if you own the house for 10 years or something, then after that, you can get another loan or something. But I think there is a real problem there that needs to be addressed. And for energy, for JPS, it's not just the thing. It is all the add-ons. Because like, I know my personal light bill is $4,000 for the month. That's usage cost. But I'm paying $18,000 at the end of the day with all the tack on, tack on and tack on. So those tack-ons need to be removed or lessened or something.
Thank you. Comrade Morris?
Okay, I'm almost certain that the existing policy is that after 15 years, you can get another loan from the NHT. But, you know, we are prepared to look at the situation that you have outlined where, you know, a young person who has joined with another family member, parent, to get that benefit, you know? And then that young person now steps out in another five years, get married and want to get their own home and is deprived of that situation. So we are prepared to look at a situation like that because our intention is to empower and clear the way so that our people can own their own homes. So, you know, thank you for raising that particular scenario. And I see a member of my task force here, Arnold de Brown. And so I know, I know that he will remind us at the task force meeting on the matter. But we thank you for raising the point.
All right, so we'll take one more question.
Good night, everyone. So I have a home not too far from here and we're plagued with petty thieves. And while I know that Senator Bonting spoke about neighborhood watch as a method that can be used, I would love if he could perhaps give some more tips about how we, the citizens, can participate in our security. And also, while, wait till he's finished. While you're at the ministry, you would have implemented the Stay Alert app, which allows citizens to play a greater role in their own security. I want to know if the administration, the PNP administration, has any plans to introduce a similar technological tool that will give citizens more power in terms of having security and safety?
Before Comrade Bonting responds, I like stirring the pot. And I think part of the reason we're here is to stir the pot to see if there are ideas that are doable, possible, fundable. So in addition to what Sashika just asked about in terms of security, technology and so on, we have been deliberating on an issue. The issue is there is no police post in Northwest St. Andrew. If there is an issue at your home, a problem that you may have, you call Constant Spring, Doherty Park, et cetera, maybe even up Red Hills, Hunts Bay, and we don't even have a police post in Northwest. So we have been toying with the idea and wondering, and I'd like the residents' response and our response and guidance here since we have Senator Bonting with us. Is there a possibility that we could consider police posts, maybe a mobile police post? And if we're looking at a location, I think one of our hotspots is actually right by Price Right. So if we can find the land, maybe government land, and we can have that conversation, is it possible that we could introduce that idea of putting a mobile police post in the hotspot area right there in Price Right, along with our technological ideas that we might come up with?
Thank you. So what, when I was minister, we had invested a number of container police posts that we could respond quickly. We didn't have to get a secure piece of land that we could purchase or lease long-term. You just needed somewhere sufficient to park a 40-foot container. And it really provided a base for foot patrols or bicycle patrols in a hotspot area. And it worked very effectively. Arnoldo, you will recall, we had one by Lake Spenn and it worked very well, that continual presence. And we had others in St. Catherine as well. And so it was, it has proven effective. And I certainly think, you know, when we come to office, if you need one. Or sorry, if really was, if you still need it. When we come to office, if you still need it, then we can certainly look at why. It sounds like you've already identified the location for it. But technology today is a big part of security. You know, obviously, cameras are increasingly being used as a deterrent, increasingly being used as an investigative tool. Drones, in fact, drone technology has been accelerated due to the whole Ukraine-Russian conflict. And drones, which were very expensive at one time. And I'm talking security drones, not, you know, sort of toy drones and personal drones, right? But security drones have become much, much more affordable. And in fact, can be used not just for operational support by police teams when they come out. But they now have what they call loitering drones, which you send up, they have a lot of fancy equipment, radar, FLIR, cameras, you know, with a lot of range. And they can, they fly slowly and can patrol a wide area because they're high enough that their cameras can see what's taking place. These are, for example, for maritime purposes. They're much more cost-effective than sending out these blowout of Coast Guard vessels to try and patrol our EEZ. So these are the types of technologies now we have to accelerate adoption for. When we brought in the Stay Alert app back in 2013, I think it was, it was revolutionary, it was way ahead of its time. Essentially, what it allowed, anybody with a smartphone, download the app on your phone. It had, I think, about four features. But the most important one was the panic button. And once you, you know, there's so many stories of citizens calling police station and ringing without a answer, the number out of order or so on. This didn't need that, you didn't need to make voice contact. And especially in a situation where somebody, say, would be at home, they hear a burglar breaking in, they don't want to talk. They can just press their, the panic button on your phone and it would send your GPS location to the police station. So this was a great advantage in some of our less formal communities or in rural communities where people can't give you a street name and a street address, but a GPS can lead you right there. And it was, as I said, it was cutting-edge, it allowed you to do other things. It had a sort of know-the-law, where it gave you key things about your rights and so on. It had a camera feature where you could anonymously submit intelligence to police control, send photos which would be geolocated so that you could, you know, report suspicious activities. You know, it's one of these unfortunate things in politics. A new administration comes in and feel they have to abandon everything of the previous administration. And that was one of the things that they abandoned. But certainly, with as technology has improved, you know, we could bring back not just that version of Stay Alert, but something that would be that much more improved. And by the way, if you were even being chased, the Stay Alert app would keep pinging so that it gave every few seconds, it updated your location. It really wasn't looking back on it, way ahead of its time. And now, 10 years then, you know, the take-up of smartphones was small. A lot of people then still had bangers or so on. But now a smartphone is ubiquitous. So it could, it would be even more valuable and useful.
So I'm bringing back Senator Bonting.
Yes, definitely, but new and improved.
Okay, great.
And I just tell you, even a child taking public transport, for those of you who may have taken Uber or one of those, their security features and tracks them and could geofence the child. So when they go outside of the route, it would send an alert to the parent to say, look, man, your child's supposed to be coming from Meadowbrook to wherever your home is. And if they come off of that route, right away you are alerted. You can either call the police or so on. So it has great potential.
All right, so we'll take the closing remarks. And with five minutes, starting with, since you have the mic, Senator Bonting, closing remarks, then we get to.
As I said, just to recap, there's somebody gesticulating very.
Yes, yes, sir. Let me just.
Look like burning issue, burning issue. Good night, everyone. Good night, all members on the platform. Thank you very much. A well-welcome, welcome to Northwest St. Andrew. And I hope this forum can continue across the whole Northwest St. Andrew. Thank you very, very much.
Well, just in closing, just in closing, let me say thank you also to what has been a very attentive and very disciplined audience. And I am happy to have been able to respond to this great initiative by Ethne. Ethne and I work together in Manchester and I'm happy to come and work with her and to support her. And I think, I think with this sort of establishing a community dialogue, it bodes well for the future, not just for security, but for development generally in the constituency. And we look forward to your enlightened leadership.
Senator Morris?
Thank you very much for the invitation, Ethne and your team. And we look forward to working with you in this constituency to improve the housing stock for the citizens and to make sure the communities are in a state where they are improved for all members, including senior citizens, persons with disabilities, as we have pointed out in the Portia initiative. And I say to you, just give us the opportunity as a political organization to start the housing transformation again in Jamaica. Thank you.
I have focused a lot this evening on energy insofar as its impact on cost of living. When you hear me next week in parliament, I'm going to be speaking about energy in terms of its impact and its importance for growth in our economy. Jamaica has not had significant growth for a long time, starting with the first energy crisis. I believe once we are able to solve our energy problem, we're going to see faster rate of growth, more businesses coming on stream and Jamaica becoming a far better place to live. Thank you, bro.
So the wrap-up falls to me. And I took copious notes, but I will not be going through all of them. What I must say first of all is thank you to my team members. And it sounds good to say team members, not true. Because at some point in time, I hope I'll actually be walking up Duke Street with them going into parliament. No ifs, no ifs at all. And that will only be possible with your help because the partnership that we're starting is going to continue right through building the house. is going to continue right through building the houses, ensuring that the energy transformation does take place. And of course, the security transformation with technology, as was mentioned just a while ago. I'd like to say thanks to everybody who is here. And I want to make special mention, because this partnership that you're seeing here starts in our communities. We have our community leaders who are with us this evening. Mrs Fernandez, who is the president of the Huendan Citizens Association. Mrs Karango, who is the president of the Arlene Gardens Citizens Association. We have Mr Vincent Morrison, Three Oaks Gardens. Thank you so very much for being here. And all of this work that has been put in to put on an event like this begins with our team. And I'm very proud of my team, very pleased with my team. And yes, I hear the "wow" in the background, yes, I am. And drinks around me at some point in time. We want to also extend thank you to Mr Russell, Errol Russell, who is the man behind the camera and who has been helping with streaming. And I saw, is it Teddy? There you go, who is also on the other camera in the back. Thank you both very much. Because it makes no sense for us to do all this wonderful work and nobody hears about it or sees it. And with that said, Comrade Kay Kelly, Liko Wachitalawa, and she steps in just when we need her, exactly this evening when we needed her. Thank you so very much. There is technology involved in all that we do. And as you came in, there was a scan code that was around there. So I'm going to ask Jordan Tish and is it Shauna Kay, as we're exiting, just help persons to scan the code. Because what we're also doing is driving engagement. So you'll be directed through your phone to a site or a link. And we're asking you just to accept and to follow. And going forward, you'll be seeing us a whole lot more. I'd like to mention my fellow vote of thankee, who is Jack from Marbally. Thank you very much for that. Thank you very much for being here. We have a lot of our other citizens from other communities who are here. And we thank you so much this evening for joining with us. On that note, did I make it under two minutes?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You see, they bad me up, you know, proper, proper. Thank you so very much, everybody. Have a good evening and get home safely.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Senator. Thanks, Comrade Morris. Do you know her? She's my cousin.
Really?
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, well, we are family.